Oh, you want to turn your mic on there, sorry.
Good afternoon, everybody. It is two o'clock. I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge to our land acknowledgement. The city of Fort Saskatchewan is located within Treaty Six Territory and Maitis Nation of Alberta Region Four. The ancestral and traditional territory of the Niwauk, Denai, Blackfoot, Sato, Nakota Sioux, and Maity, we acknowledge the many First Nations, Maitis, and Inuit whose footsteps have marked these lands for generations. It is because of our treaty relationship that we can live, work, and play on Treaty Six Territory. I don't think there are any delegations today. Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, minutes? Minutes from the last committee, the whole meeting. Would somebody like to move approval, please? Counselor Abatoye?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we, the council approves the September twentieth Committee of the Whole Minutes as presented and circulated.
Any errors or changes proposed? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Passed. First item on the agenda is the Asset Management Update. Mr. Gerber, I think, is in person, and Mr. Northerly is joining virtually. Mr. Gerber, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, your worship. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, your worship, members of council. I am before you today to provide an update on the asset management program. It's written in the asset management policy that we provide an annual update on the status of the project. In 2022, we were able to fill the position of the Asset Management Advisor. And since that point, we've been working towards acquiring an asset management software package. This RFP was released in May, closed in June. We had to put it out for a five-week time period, at which point we did the review process and did vendor presentations. Throughout this project, city staff has been super supportive in the implementation of the asset management project with doing RFP reviews before release, and we had fifteen subject matter experts participate in the vendor presentations to help make final decision on the software. I'm happy to say that we've actually just concluded the contracts for the vendor this morning, so we can actually start moving forward with the implementation process of the software. This information is provided by initial timeline provided by PSD Citywide. The first couple of weeks will be hammering out the actual project timelines, project plans that we'll be working towards. There's really three phases to this project. The first one's building an asset management repository. The second phase is to do a pilot project in with the utilities group to do water, wastewater, storm systems. As part of the pilot, we'll be testing the maintenance management, software, the schedules, and all components of the daily operational work. Once the pilot project is concluded, we can start deploying the software to the other assets within the tangible tangible capital assets within the city. While that's going on, there's gonna be a lot of secondary work to do. We're having to integrate a lot of data sets from across the organization that have never been implemented or combined together into this one system. The system will also able enable us to put in user manuals, maintenance manuals, if they're in digital formats, technical drawings, as-built drawings from engineering. Also, as we're working through this and building the maintenance management component, we can start looking at the service level we're at with each of our individual assets, determine the performance indicators, and determine if we have suitable evaluation criteria for inspecting the assets moving forward. We're incorporating other projects as we move forward in this application. One project that's coming up is the neighborhood rehabital- rehabital- yeah, rehabitalization project, which is due first quarter of 2023. This will give us timelines, cost estimates for major infrastructure changes within the city for the next ten years and potential forecasts for the next ten to twenty years going out. We'll also be looking at critical assets and the identification of critical assets. This is so supports emergency plans and also potentially the life cycles of the assets tied to those critical assets. Once we get the system in place, we can start looking at developing the asset management plans for our assets as well, bringing in the maintenance schedules, the inspection criteria to have a better handle on how we're managing our individual assets. The big part of this is the level of service. There's two parts to the level of service. There's the customer level of service and the technical level of service. What we're trying to do within the next year is really understand the technical level of service and where we're at with our assets. We already know that we're well ahead with the roads, with the PQI index, maintenance of the roads, inspections of the roads. But we also have other assets that we may be neglecting. We just determined a couple of weeks ago that we don't actually have a full inventory of street signs within the city. So we're reaching out to an organization that does some of our other inspections to see if in 2024, we can complete a sign inventory of the city, which will be the foundation for doing future inspections and developing asset criteria evaluations for those assets. Once we have the technical side done, we can start looking at where we are in relation to what the customers want with their assets as well. It's my belief is it's better to have a grasp of where everything is at once, so we're not just coming back every two weeks with a different asset, where you can take a look, see how we're managing them, we can evaluate them, and then move forward where we need to. Um, last slide is part of the asset management readiness scale. Part of the evaluation is training for city employees, including councillors. The institute- infrastructure asset management in Alberta actually provides courses specific to city council if for those that are interested in asset management. I have reached out to other communities where councillors have participated. They've said that they've actually benefited from councillors taking these courses, because it gives a more focused presentation on what asset management is, why it's important, and what we're trying to achieve. And they've been able to get more stakeholders on council to push the asset management as well.
Finished?
I'm finished. Any questions?
Any co- any questions from council? Mayor Catcher first. I'll insert myself after councillor Abatoye. Thank you. Is it on? No?
There we are. Great.
This?
Yep, it's on now. Okay, thank you. Oh, you put everybody over. You made us all live. We're all live. Okay. Okay, um, so the question that I have, uh, when you talk about inventory, so because we have to insure all of our assets in Fort Saskatchewan, how do we determine what's on our insurance, you know, when you, when you say we don't even know how many signs we have?
Um, it, it was actually risk management that provided for attention during the last steering committee presentation. It seems to be that just the signs are the only ones that they don't have a complete inventory for. Um, and that's why we're pushing to get the inventory done.
Okay, so just for clarity, so that's the only area that, that you have a deficiency in. You've got the lane kilometers, you've got the parks, you've got everything else. Turns yourself off there.
Turn, sorry, uh, to the chair, to your worship. As far as I know at this point, like, we do have the inventories, but the next stage on that is, are we actually doing scheduled inspections of the assets for everything that we have? So we have to determ- we'll be determining that as we move forward.
Can I just finish that? So as you're saying that, though, so we have our insurance, so we have the list, uh, the departments, do they not already, uh, provide you the, the lists of when they do their inspections?
Um, to the chair, to your worship, I haven't had time to actually go into the actual inspection schedule for all the assets.
Maybe Ms. Smith can answer it, and I'm good.
Through your worship, we do have regular inspections scheduled. Part of this project will be auditing our current practices and making sure that we're doing enough.
Okay, um, councillor Abatoye, I don't know whether I did something to kick you off or not.
I think, I think I'm on. Just leave it. Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for your presentation. Um, obviously, um, I, I'm sure we all agree that asset management is so important, right? Um, but my question, though, is, I'm just wondering, do we have a cap on the assets we're actually, um, you know, taking stock of, you know, um? Because like, for example, are we gonna be, um, also including on this list, like, all the cutlerys that we have or all the printers? Like, is there a cap on the assets we're actually taking stock of, or is it everything the city owns?
Um, to the chair, to councillor Abatoye, the, the focus is the tangible capital assets. So we'll be doing like the photocopiers, but not necessarily every cellphone or computer that we do have.
Right, so is there, is there like a value that's we're capping it at?
Not at this point.
Through, sorry, maybe I can add to that, um, uh, the tangible capital assets have a cap of $10,000, anything below $10,000 go, um, we would flow through operations, and we do have, um, some other criteria that we look at, um, where we wouldn't necessarily capitalize certain assets, um, either because they're part of, um, another existing larger asset, uh, or a component of, or because they, um, they don't meet other capitalization criteria. Um, the, but the focus, right, the initial focus again is primarily on the underground infrastructure, the water sewer, um, and stormwater systems, um, at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so this is an enterprise-wide, um, project. Uh, it's gonna be covering all the departments in the city. So do we have a um, length of time that, um, we're gonna be, um, implementing this, uh, software?
Uh, to the chair, to councillor Abatoye, the software vendor's saying eight to twelve months to implement the software, where historical records, drawing, stuff like that could take longer, and potentially some of the data integration may need to take place a little bit after that as well.
Okay, can I, you can come back to me. Okay, one more. Okay, um, so just back to the, I really like the example you used, um, neighborhood revitalization. Um, that's something we've been seeing in our budgets for, you know, every year, and, um, is this project gonna help us know how much we need to put aside realistically every year, in order to be able to meet, um, the life cycle, um? In order to be able to meet the needs of, of revitalizing our neighborhoods?
Um, to the chair, to councillor Abatoye, a big part of this project is the integration of all the departments for the tangible capital assets, but to also be able to get better information on the cost to operate those assets. So the finance department can actually forecast or provide better forecasts in the future for their five-year, ten-year, thirty-year forecast, because they'll have the information in one system, and all the operations will be feeding into that, and they'll be, over time, they'll be able to provide better forecasts on equipment replacements, um, infrastructure replacement, and, uh, and try and streamline the overall process for replacing assets as well.
Okay, so I guess your answer is yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Through, through your worship, or sorry, through Mr. Chair, if I could add on to that. Uh, there is a study that's going on right now that looks at our current inventory and determines how much should be set aside each year to maintain what exists. The asset management system, once up and running, will help us make sure that that allocation increases as we grow, and that we have, uh, sufficient funds for the future.
Thank you. I'll insert myself here. I'm actually very excited about this. I, I think it's critical to, to, to running a successful organization as large and diverse as the city of Fort Saskatchewan is. It's much more, and, and I'll get to the question. I'd look for confirmation from you. My, my understanding is that this, this software is much more than an inventory. It's not a listing. It's a central repository, eventually, a central repository of all the information that we have available on any particular asset in one location that's universally acceptable by everybody that's authorized to access it. Is that correct?
Uh, to the chair, that is correct.
So things like you mentioned maintenance manuals or scheduled maintenance or, or, uh, ma- maintenance logs would all be on the system?
Uh, to the chair, your, that's correct.
Thank you. Um, our peers in the neighborhood, so s- other similar communities in, in around the Edmonton area, are, are any of them currently working on this? Have they succeeded in implementing something similar to this? Any comments on what their experience was, if in fact they've done anything of this nature?
Um, to the chair, I've reached out to a few municipalities in the region. Everyone seems to be at different stages in the implementation of asset management. Uh, there are specific data layers where one community is successful on, where the other one's continuing to struggle with, so it really depends on the support, I think, from the organization. The ones that do have more support tend to have, are further along with the process.
And, and I get that. It's software. Um, there was, in the last half a dozen years, been several large, uh, called multinational corporations in this country that have been virtually brought to their knees because they didn't properly implement the software. And that comes down to proper resources and proper planning. Um, anyway, continue the good work. I look forward to it. Councillor Noyan, you're up. I thought you were. Cheryl, help me out, please.
There we go. Thanks very much. Uh, my question has to do with, um, the, the benefit to, I guess, service level analysis that we'll gain from, um, from the new software. It seemed like in the report it was a bit of an afterthought, s- service levels, um, with, with the implement- implementation of asset management. So can you maybe just elaborate on what we're gonna gain and, uh, in, in terms of of sta- statistical analysis on service levels and how easy it will be to mine that data and look back historically on, you know, to gauge how, you know, something, something's doing, how, how we're achieving our goals in an area?
Um, t- to the chair, to councillor Noyan. This system will actually provide us the, the capability of actually setting um, statistical values or evaluation criteria on our assets. So we can actually benchmark on potentially response times depending on the asset, or even for vehicles that may be in service use, but that may be qualified by the amount of time that the vehicle was in maintenance as well. So we'll be able to actually see the usage of the vehicle, the availability of the vehicle, and the amount of time that the vehicle was actually in maintenance, to see if it's an older vehicle, we're spending more time on maintenance cycles, if it's going in more frequently, what's the actual lifespan of that vehicle, and we can start modeling that as well. So this, this soft, the reporting and, and like component of the software will provide us a lot more information on where we are at our, with our assets. Are we doing the proper maintenance patterns or routines to maintain the asset for as long as possible? Does that answer?
Yeah, that helps. I know the service level is such a broad topic, and you can, you can pick, you know, any, any department and any service and, and, and use analogy from that. My, my question kind of, wa- was kind of, or it came from the fact that at, at some points that we, we've seen administration have to go back and, and, and be able to, uh, you, you know, uh, to dig for, for data, uh, in, in a certain department and then bring it back to council, and then I guess what I want to know is that it's gonna be readily available, um, with, with the implementation of this system to have it at our fingertips.
Um, maybe I can add to that, um, the, through your worship, uh, sorry, uh, the, um, the, um, service levels are one of three primary character, uh, primary pillars of an asset, an effective asset management, the other two being cost and risk management. Um, the there will always be, to some degree, this will give us a dashboard, um, give us an idea of what our target service levels are, both on a customer service level, what, what P- the community is receiving at the end of the day in terms of service, and why we own the asset, um, as well as on a technical level, if the performance of the asset itself. It'll, so it'll definitely provide that dashboarding level, um, high-level information. It'll end up being rolled up, um, uh, at a fairly high level that's, um, appropriate for different audiences. Um, the the, um, but there will, oh, there's always going to be situations where there's gonna be more information that's needed, um, that may be on the scope of what we currently track or what we track from time to time. This will be an ongoing process to continue to develop and refine those service levels.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, and dashboarding is, is, I think, the word that, uh, you know, kind of sums it all up.
Good. Councillor Blizzard, please.
I don't really have any questions. I see the importance of it, but I do have a question, whether it's for you or for our staff. Um, are we gonna have an elected officials workshop? Because I think that might be a good idea for us to understand this better.
Uh, through your worship, I, I don't think we've had anything planned or discussed anything like that. Um, y- you know, we'll just take the question away, and maybe we can consider it kind of after the fact, but I think primarily we would encourage you to look at the elected officials training. That's, uh, that was referenced in the presentation.
Oh, so it's offered through that? We can just find it through there? Okay, thank you.
Councillor Harris, please.
Um, given the fact that the city started working on asset management back in two thousand and three, uh, it will be good to get it wrapped up by, uh, the end of the first quarter in 2023, so that's really good to see. Uh, and I'm pretty sure that the, uh, the overall outcome of this project will be extremely beneficial to the city. But Mr. Gerber, just picking up on your, on your comment about signs, the inventory of signs, there are obviously a couple of classes of signs, are there not? Can you, uh, give us, give us a sense, because traffic control signs are different than a park sign or something of that nature, or the name of a, of a park. Is that a fair assessment?
Um, to the chair, to councillor Harris, that is a fair assessment. I'd like to just add in that I know the roads department is hoping to actually barcode all the signs as well. So that may be a further project that's taken on after we've got the complete inventory.
Well, that, that's good to hear. Yeah, I asked the question because obviously traffic control, the stop sign, for example, if, uh, there's an accident from a risk standpoint, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, if there is an accident and it turns out that the stop sign wasn't there, uh, either the city or other people can be, uh, legal, legally liable. Is that a fair assessment?
Uh, to the chair, to councillor Harris, yes, that's a fair assessment, and uh, Strathcona County actually went through that about twenty years ago. And that's when they actually did their full inventory of all their signs and barcoded, because they wanted the situation if someone came in with a stop sign to Public Works or City Hall that they could just read the barcode and find out where it was from and put it back.
Good, good. Well, I guess with, with anything else we're doing in terms of our assets, that's, that's one, one element that obviously has to be done, and it's never, never finished. So I'm glad to see you guys pick that up, and you're And you're moving to resolve those problems, so good work on getting us to where we are. And welcome to the uh, to the city, Mr. Gerber. I don't think we've had a chance to meet, but uh, good work.
Thank you, councillor Harris.
Any further questions or observations? Seeing none, thank you for your time, appreciated the report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Morrissey, we ready, we're ready with the hydrogen update, we have the people in place? Should we start the? The land use by law update, okay, let's proceed then to. And just so I know, we're gonna break at about three for those for those folks, is that my understanding?
Through your worship, they'll be ready at around three, but if it's just after three o'clock, that would be acceptable.
Okay, super, thank you. Let's move on to the land use by law update. Mr. Reed. Is virtual, Mr. Thomas, Shree Cindy, Lindsay Francis, how many people do we have here, three? Did I miss somebody, David Shore? Hi, David. Um, when you're ready, folks.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Uh, my name is Craig Thomas and uh, I'm joined by uh, Lindsay Francis, our senior planner. As well as uh, David Shore, and I think that Mark Reed is joining us virtually. Uh, so David Shore is with uh, ISL Consulting. And uh, Mr. Reed is with Urban Strategies, so today we're gonna present the second. Update of the land use by law project. We were here last month. To discuss the land use by law project in general. And today we're gonna focus on the engagement work that's been done and what we've heard, so. I'll turn it over to uh, Lindsay who will take it from here.
Thanks, Craig. Hello, everyone again, uh, it's nice to be here again with you. And I'm gonna start off our presentation today and I'm gonna talk about the engagement we did with our mature. Neighborhoods residents, and then I'm gonna hand it over to David and Mark, and they're gonna talk about the council engagement. And then we'll finish it up with our next steps. So right before I get into what we heard, I'll tell you a little bit about why we started to engage with the mature neighborhood residents. So the direction for this came from the municipal development plan. And in the MDP, it includes developing a mature neighborhood strategy as a short term implementation item. And it was also within policy six point two point four four, which is shown here on the screen. So following the adoption of the MDP, engagement with the residents of the mature neighborhoods took place throughout twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So how were mature neighborhood residents engaged? Well, the planning and development team connected with residents in four main ways. The first, on June third, twenty twenty-one, administration sent information packages. To the almost four thousand four hundred residents and property owners within our mature neighborhoods. So these information packages were distributed through the mail to residents within Old Fort, Ross Creek, Sheridan. Pineview South and Pineview North. The information packages included an outline of the anticipated project timeline, a link to the website. Instructions on how to sign up for information sessions and a draft conceptual development patterns map. Later in June twenty twenty-one, three virtual information sessions were held. The purpose of these virtual sessions was to share information on the project and the mature neighborhoods. Outline the future engagement opportunities and collect feedback on the draft development patterns map. Then following the information sessions, working group sessions were held from September twenty twenty-one to February twenty twenty-two. And the purpose of the working group sessions was to obtain a deeper understanding of what characteristics may. Make each of these neighborhoods unique. And then lastly, this past August, walking tours were held in each of the five neighborhoods. The purpose of the walking tours was to further understand the character of these areas. And collect feedback on residents' observations and thoughts on development in these areas. So now we'll get into what we heard from the residents, starting with what we heard at the virtual information sessions. So it started off with administration sharing a presentation, and this included information about the neighborhood life cycle. Current real estate, demographic and population trends within the mature neighborhoods. As well as content from the local school board's capital plans. Commercial vacancy information, intended project approach, anticipated project timeline and future engagement opportunities. And the participants were able to ask questions throughout the session. Specifically, administration was looking for feedback on the draft conceptual development patterns map, which is shown here. And all participants felt that this map made sense and appropriately identified distinct patterns of development within the mature neighborhoods. No concerns were raised regarding the map or any of the delineated areas. And some participants expressed appreciation for the attention to detail and accurate reflection of the development at areas. And across these three virtual sessions, thirty-seven people attended. So after the information sessions were, two working groups formed with interested residents. And each of these working groups met virtually three times, and each time they did a variety of different activities in each meeting. One of the activities included submitting photos of their neighborhood that represent what's special or unique about their neighborhood. And there's a few examples shown here. So throughout the working group sessions, there were some general themes that emerged. There were some public space elements that were brought up by residents. That they value about their neighborhoods but were not within the scope of the land use by law. And all participants expressed being open to development in their neighborhood. But they varied in the degree that they felt redevelopment should be regulated. So while some people were very open to development, they generally leaned towards greater regulatory controls. To ensure that development respects the existing context. Participants expressed concerns regarding the level at which some aging properties are being maintained. And participants from the Old Fort area expressed concern regarding losing historical buildings in the area. So uh, the first session of the working groups had ten people in attendance, the second had nine, and the third had six. And that brings us to the walking tours. So with the development patterns map being confirmed in the earlier stages. In each of these five areas, a different walking tour was held. And there were many elements of the mature neighborhoods that were well liked, such as mature trees, variation in building materials and facades. Back alleys that provide more on-street parking and walkable neighborhoods with safe sidewalks. Many residents expressed being open to new development that preserves the neighborhood character. However, some others were not in favor of new development. The idea of hidden density or gentle density was preferred where development, like suites and well-designed higher-density housing forms. Can blend in with the neighborhood. Participants also shared their concerns for the future of the mature neighborhoods. Some people were concerned about redevelopment being too close or too large to existing development. Which could result in covering neighboring properties in shadows and reduce privacy. Many comments were received about the maintenance of various elements such as landscaping, sidewalks, housing, et cetera. And across the five walking tours, sixty-two people attended. The feedback from the mature neighborhood engagements will help inform the new land use by law by highlighting which development. Features may need to be regulated. And now I'm gonna hand it over to David.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good afternoon, mayor and council, uh, thank you for providing. Uh, us an opportunity to describe to you what we heard during our uh, interviews with you. Uh, again, my name is David Shore, I'm joined by my colleague, uh, Mark Reed who's online. And our other colleague Anna Glover is here to take notes. This portion of the presentation will take about ten minutes. And we'll provide you with a summary of the interviews that we conducted, if we can go to the next slide. We'll summarize how we engaged with you and what we heard, we'll do that at a very high um, thematic level. So from September twenty-third to twenty-seventh, uh, city staff. Mark and I conducted interviews with each of you, they were about an hour in part, in duration. Uh, the purpose of the interviews was to understand your perspective about. The future land use by law, the existing land use by law. And for us to answer any questions about the project and its direction. Um, the direction provided by the municipal development plan. And provide information about the engagement process and our next steps. During each interview, um, we ran through a series of questions. Each of you uh, expressed and responded with insight. And optimism about the city, about future development and about community building. Those responses that you provided fell into five broad categories. Residential intensification, downtown development, housing diversity, mixed uses and walkability. And the structure of the land use by law itself. So as we go through the next five slides, um, if you haven't seen your specific comments in the presentation or what we've said. Please know that we've heard what you've said. We've considered it and it will be part of the land use by law as we go through, we're just staying at a thematic level in this short ten minute presentation. So Mark will start off with the first three slides and then I'll wrap up with the next two and then Lindsay will. Close it. Mark?
Thank you, David, um, I I imagine you can all hear me. Uh, one of the important themes that came across, um, which is is very important and significant. Was this notion of residential intensification. And through all of the interviews, we note that there is general support for concept, context sensitive. Residential and commercial intensification, and that that really means that it needs to be compatible. Uh, with what is there, not straying too far um, from the built form. Uh, and built form criteria that we see in the various different place types. Uh, there was recognition that intensification could encourage reinvestment in mature neighborhoods and that was seen as desirable. There was also recognition that some residents may be concerned about infill development. If they perceive that it will change the character of their their beloved community. And that's something in in terms of next steps that we need to be careful of. This feedback will inform our approach um, towards developing. Context-sensitive developments and defining specifically what those are in each various neighborhood. And in each various place types, because we know our neighborhoods are diverse, they're not all the same, they don't have the same lot sizes. Uh, they some, they're they're all different and we need to be responsive to those differences. And create a a structure that can allow um, new new development to successfully integrate uh, with what is there today. The next theme was downtown development, and I think it's fair to say that all of the councillors were. Recognized how important downtown is in the overall urban structure and community of Fort Saskatchewan. And there was general agreement on the importance of downtown's historic character, it's unique in the region. And that there was potential for higher residential densities within the downtown. Uh, there was also recognition that new developments can help to increase the vitality and vibrancy. Of the overall downtown and that reinvestment should be responsive. Um, and respectful uh, of the history of that area. In terms of next steps, the land use by law approach needs to develop specific criteria. For mixed-use developments in key locations that can deliver more residents into the downtown. Uh, and again, uh, support increased downtown vitality and vibrancy. Uh, next slide is is about housing diversity, and I think this was was. A lot of the discussion was about housing diversity and there was general support. Uh, to increase the housing diversity, um, the types of housing that one could find. Uh, within Fort Saskatchewan, and so this this approach really does. Mean that that what the land use by law is trying to do is to address. Life cycle needs of residents at various stages within their lives, so it's a young single person. Uh, looking for housing does not need the same kind of housing that a young family might want or. An established family might need, or um, families that are downsizing. So we need to think about those kinds of needs when we think about housing types, so this means. Uh, all housing types from garage suites to smaller lot housing, to larger lot housing, uh, to apartment housing. So in terms of our approach to the land use by law, we need a multifaceted approach that can accommodate. Different housing types throughout the city that are appropriate to the place types that we find ourselves in, again. Another context-sensitive approach. Back over to you, David.
Thanks, Mark, and our next slide is about mixed uses and walkability. Uh, land use planning, best practices, the market, the MDP. All talk about mixing compatible uses together in the same building or within the same neighborhood. Um, this approach has benefits from an economic, a social and an environmental one. Uh, and many of you identified those benefits uh, as well and want the nan- the new land use by law to allow. The mixture of uses uh, or mixture of uses within a building, within a neighborhood to some degree. Um, there's, however, there's also concerns that were referenced around. Garbage, light and noise, what we call nuisances, and those nuisances have to be managed if you're introducing. Different land uses into a neighborhood that might not have been there in the past. So going forward, our team will consult with the public and stakeholders. Here, there are comments about the mixture, their tolerance for the mixture of uses within a neighborhood or within a building. And be aware of the nuisances that they can cause, so we'll work to mitigate or minimize those concerns. As we're drafting the new by law. And the final theme that uh, was identified throughout our conversations with you was around the structure of the land use by law itself. And with all land use by laws, there's always a balance between this prescriptive nature of a by law. Versus the flexibility that you can have within the by law itself. So that discussion really informs how we're going to create the land use by law. Now, in summary, um, each of you advised that the land use by law should be concise. It needs to be visual and it needs to be user-friendly. And some some particularly mentioned that the amount of information provided in an application. To administration and to council needs to be firmly described within the regulations of the by law. And there also has to be a very clear direction about how the application is reviewed and the timelines that go along with. Uh, that review and how decisions are made. Those things can be accomplished very easily and in fact, your current by law has those elements within it. Now, some councillors, uh, as far as the specificity or uh, flexibility or certainty that's in a by law. Some councillors felt that each district should have a high level of specificity within it. Especially in the mature areas of the city. Uh, that uh, that Lindsay just described. And that would give council control how those developments or administration. Control how those developments would occur to prevent the kind of nuisances that we just talked about. Uh, other councillors were interested in a more flexible regulations that would enable new development. What was agreed on those two different approaches is that there should be a balance between um, ensuring. That developers are building something that's appropriate to the community that they're building in or the neighborhood that they're building in. But at the same time, they're not restricted so much that they're not interested in developing in Fort Saskatchewan. So this is where again, our conversations with stakeholders and the public will help us understand the tolerances between. The restrictive nature of a land use by law, which it inherently is, and the flexibility that can, it can allow in its review. So we'll try and uh, create that balance between the certainty and uh, flexibility.
Thank you, David and Mark, and now I'll just go over our next steps. So the information from both the engagements with the mature neighborhood residents and the council interviews. Are gonna be used to inform our new land use by law. We're going to be continuing engagement throughout the project as we work on the new land use by law. And we're gonna be starting with a public launch happening at the end of October here, and we're gonna be hosting some stakeholder workshops coming up. At the same time, we're gonna be concurrently starting to draft the land use by law. And those are our next steps, so thank you and we'll take any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, any questions?
Thank you uh, for the update, a question for you.
Thank you uh for the update. Uh, question for you, when you were talking with the uh residents in these areas and in. In this, it talks about the fact that they like the uh schools close by and the walkability. Um, so I guess the question that I have, do they fully understand that that if their neighborhood doesn't have the density? Or the um, the uh young children that are growing up in there, if it becomes too mature without the children, those. Those schools will cease to exist in those neighborhoods? Did did you have that conversation?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to your worship. Uh, yes, I think that uh was front and center in some of the conversations that were had. Um, there was certainly diversity in the type of people that attended the workshops and the walking tours and the information sessions. Um, but I think one of the concerns that that was raised is making sure that um. The uh life cycle of the neighborhood can continue and that redevelopment and density means accommodating. Uh, a range of uh families and and different types of populations.
Okay, question number two. Um, at an earlier presentation, and I know it probably deals more with the schools. Um, and and, you know, and the need for schools and the locations of them. We were told in the census data that um there isn't the density of of the uh young children like in. Where Moat is and maybe when Ferguson is. And yet, on a Facebook page, I saw. Uh, things saying, oh, there's there's too many children for these areas. So can you explain? What the differential would be between what the census is saying and what uh the school boards are seeing?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, to your worship. Um, certainly there ha- in the mature neighborhoods and in the established neighborhoods, there is. Uh, a decline in population. Um, while there is some. Families that are moving in, I think the trend is certainly that the neighborhood is getting older and that there are um. Uh, fewer uh fewer population and fewer children within those neighborhoods. So. Um, certainly as part of what the municipal development strategy is. Um, is there needs to be an effort to look at ways to uh accommodate. Uh, increasing the population and and certainly density would be one of the uh, one of the answers to do that.
Okay, but I guess that's my question. It's saying that uh the school boards are already looking at having to move. Children out of the schools because there's too many children uh for the schools in in those locations. So that seems to contradict uh your in- uh uh planning's information and even the census status. So. Why would we have such a conflict for that, for the school saying there's too many children?
Through your worship, I I do think the the X factor in this might be. That not all of the children that go to a school live in the immediate neighborhood. So. If you have a school that's bussing in on a a lot of like more kids than the school has the capacity to handle, then. Um, that's how you could overrun the capacity of a school, even though the neighborhood is aging out.
Okay, thanks. I'll leave it with that.
Um, councillor Abitoye next. I'll insert myself after councillor Noian. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I really enjoyed reading your reports and um. Just the details of it and just going through the walking tours and everything. So very impressed by all the work you're doing. You and your team, so well done. Um, so Lindsay, when you were doing your presentation, you had made a comment about um. A residence asking for things that were not within the scope of the bylaw. Can you give me examples of what those things were?
Yes, through the chair to councillor Abitoye. So that could be um, the so some of the things that are public. Um, the land use bylaw deals with private land a lot. So when they're talking about public parks and. Things like uh mature trees, a lot of those are within the public lands. And so those aren't necessarily regulated in the land use bylaw.
So how do we deal with things like that? Is there an ability to be able to still? Address those issues through the bylaw, even though it's not within the scope of the bylaw? Like are there creative ways for us to still address the issues?
Through you, Mister uh Mister Chairman, councillor councillor Abitoye. I I, there are ways to take it into consideration. So for example, like maybe in a mature neighborhood where you would have. Uh, mature trees that line the street. Um, we may want to take into consideration what the setback would be, what the treatment to the front of the houses. Whether or not there's a veranda, um, the massing, the scale, those types of things. Um, so while the street might have a very uh human design to it. Because the trees naturally provide shade and those sorts of things. We can take into consideration what the built form um that would be, you know, kind of creates or frames the street and the. And the kind of that semi-public realm would look like. So that's something that could be taken into consideration. As uh Mister Reed mentioned, kind of the contextual approach that we would take.
Right, okay, thank you. So the context sensitive.
That's correct.
Referring to, okay, excellent. Um, just my final question, can you go, can you go back to the map? So I see um where you, where the highway fifteen is, there's a grayish part there that doesn't seem to be categorized. Why is that?
Uh, through you, Mister Chairman, to councillor Abitoye. So that is kind, that part of that would make up the. Um, uh municipal infrastructure like transportation, uh, as well as some commercial areas. So this specifically. Um, those areas kind of identify the residential areas and then the park systems and green spaces that are connected to them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You finished? Okay, thank you. Councillor Noian?
Yeah, thanks and uh thank you very much for your presentation today and then all the homework that you've clearly done over the summer. I think it's extremely professional and and comprehensive. The way that you've laid out this report and certainly appreciate that from my end. Uh, it's very clear the expertise that you guys have in your uh your professional areas. My question has to do with residential intensification and. And the the wording of the recommendation is the context sensitive approach to development in design. That that seems. Uh, a a little bit vague to me in a way and I, you probably have a much better idea of what that that actually means in 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 how. The implementation of of that would work for um for the efforts of intensification. Um. Uh, I guess what what I see and I and I think the the area where I circled this in the report uh is is under. Uh, the like the old fort. So if say enough neighbors complain about uh a development application for an infill or something like that. I mean, is that is that being contextually sensitive to say, okay, well, I guess we we shouldn't go ahead with that. I know you've elaborated on, you know, what. What na- uh or what residents in mature uh neighborhoods want to see next door if they're gonna see something next door. But. But what does that mean, context sensitive for residential intensification?
Mark, do you want to take that one?
Sure, uh councillor, through you, uh Chair. Um, I think what it actually really means councillor is that we need to dig into. The built form characteristics of each of your established neighborhoods primarily. We need to understand what is the s- setback of the house from the front property line, what are the side yard setbacks? What are the built form typologies that best fit that those specific characteristics? So if it's a large lot neighborhood, such as your mature neighborhood in in the adjacent to the downtown. The types of development that might be most appropriate are things that potentially look like their house form. So it could be a semi-detached unit uh that accommodates two units. But still, it looks like um it's a single house and fits in with the lot pattern characteristics. Of that neighborhood. Conversely, um, we would also want to look at. Um, if 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 it's a two-story neighborhood, could you then also accommodate residential intensification in the form of? A two-story granny flat on top of a a rear accessed garage, for example. Those are things that are. Generally contextually sensitive to an established, mature neighborhood. And that would be different than a newer neighborhood that had much tighter lots. And so we would, we would look at those characteristics and also figure out. What is appropriate residential intensification, or for that matter, commercial intensification? In newer neighborhoods that are tighter, where the lots are closer together, where they perhaps don't have rear. Uh, laneways to provide a secondary access. So it's this, it's this identification of the. The the criteria that define the built form characteristics of a neighborhood. And then looking at what are the available built form typologies that could best suit that neighborhood and be considered compatible. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that that's a very good overview. I do, I think what I've heard is that it's maybe maybe in older areas where there are already a diverse. Uh, array of lot sizes and uh architectural characteristics on the currently bu- uh built out residences that. It would probably be more of a case by case, uh, you know, analysis of what is going to fit in that neighborhood as opposed to newer and newer neighborhoods where we would see. May maybe an e- an easier decision stream to to get to what what fits that neighborhood. But I I do appreciate your answer uh very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll insert myself. Um, I've got several questions. I'm going to start with the easiest one. I've lived here, to grief, a long time, fifty years or more. I've never heard of Pine View North and South. I I don't see it on the map either. Can you tell me what that is?
Absolutely. I'll just pull up the map here. So those are areas four and five. And I believe they were split up because they have, they were noticed to have different development characteristics. Throughout those areas. Um, but when there were the working group sessions, they did. Uh, they were split up into two working groups. So one, two and three were a working group and four and five was a working group.
I think I understand. Thank you. Uh, the public engagement. Uh, I personally have always wished that 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 we would have better engagement from the public. And then I remember, of course, that I volunteered to be elected to council and I became engaged, but I spent thirty years prior to that being relatively unengaged. So. Um, how did you find the public engagement? What did you, I don't want to, not going to ask you gain what you learned from it, but what do you take away as the positives? In in Reader's Digest form and if you could comment or two on what you think you could do better for the next round of public engagement? If anything.
Uh, sure, Mister Chairman. So I think. When we're dealing with uh land use policy or regulation where it affects people the most. Um, because we went through a very extensive uh process with our municipal development plan and that's a very high level document. So. We had to do a very different type of engagement that we're doing with the land use bylaw. So in that case, you know, we're trying to do surveys, we're trying to meet people at um. Um, public spaces and that sort of thing. So we're, you know, trying to, otherwise they're not going to be engaged as as they probably should be. With the land use bylaw, um, that's the document where it really starts to affect people the most. It's where the rubber hits the road, so to speak. So. If people are concerned, they're probably going to come out. And we did find that with our walking tours because. Typically, the older the neighborhoods are, the more um more sense of place, if you will, people are going to have. They're going to be a little bit more sensitive to what happens. So what we found is that each of our walking tours. Um, and we did five of them. So we started kind of in the oldest areas and we worked out to the established neighborhoods that were. I guess more more newer. Um, but we saw the most amount of um. Participation um with the first one and then it gradually got fewer and fewer. Um, and we kind of expected that, but at the same time, we learned that um. It particularly in in the mature neighborhoods or the old fort area. Um, people have a much diverse range of opinions. So it's not just the people that are. Um, are are against development. There's also a group of people that are are very much for redevelopment within the area. And then there's everybody in between. And we did see that kind of a trend throughout our engagements. Um, which is important because we are starting to see uh different perspectives and different involvement. Um, so as we move forward, I think we're going to have to look at different ways to make sure that um. We do reflect an appropriate cross-section of the city. So we're getting um. Uh, a range of ages and a range of different demographics as well. Um, because we want to be able to to speak to um the residents as a whole.
Thank you. Um, and you touched on in your response my next question. Would you say, or is it? I think I'm sensing, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm interpreting my own change in attitude. Um, is it, it, I'm sensing that there has been a shift or a gradual shift at least. In the public perception of redevelopment as we change the terminology that we use and refocus the discussion upon appropriate for form. Um, do you, do you sense that in the community that there's been a gradual change or a change in 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 perception?
Uh, Mister Chairman, uh, it it's hard to say and I'll let my colleagues also speak to it. But um, I think it's pretty typical that you always hear from a certain group of people. And once you start to do engagement and um spread out that engagement, you start to get a diversity of opinion. And so you, you know, typically, you know, we we tend, the way we do a notification, for example, we tend to hear from the outliers. Um, so what we're trying to do is capture, like I said, kind of the a cross-section of the city. So we get a truer representation of. Of what the city is looking for and what the residents are looking for. So so I'm not sure if there's a shift. I think we're just. Capturing that that diversity of opinions, so.
And that makes sense as well. Thank you for your comment.
Add a little bit to that, to the Chair. Um, in some of the earlier engagement sessions. Some of the resident comments were thinking of infill is just skinny houses. So there has definitely been some. Education along the way as well, that learning that redevelopment doesn't just mean that it's it's a skinny skinny house next to you. So. I think there has been, a part of the engagement has been a bit of education in the process too.
Thank you for that. Um, Mayor Catcher?
Okay, thank you. Um, so I know I asked this question last time when we were sitting here at the committee of the whole. And it still comes down to, we're doing a bylaw revision or an update in it. And all of the areas that are showing on this map are are already existing. They're they're already fully built out. Uh, basically in the entire city. So and and I asked this question before because we deal with zones. So it's a R one or an R two or whatever it is in in that. So as you're writing this, is that going to change? Because right now, low density is considered single-family dwelling. Duplex or townhouses is low density. So as you're writing this, are you going to come in and say, well, in area one? Um, it can only be like a R one where it's uh. Even below low density, which is only a single-family house or something. So how are you going to work around that? Because. Um, I I don't see many changes. I know philosophically, you're talking about a lot of this stuff. But these are all pre-built out neighborhoods right now. So I'm more interested in what are we going to see when it comes to the zones? So that when somebody makes an application, they can say, well, in this zone, I can build a single family or I can build a duplex. Or as you said, well, they may be able to do, build a duplex. Are you going to put on so many regulations? That they couldn't build a duplex if it has to be a certain thing? So help me, help clarify that.
Uh, through the Chair, to the Mayor and to the Committee. Um, at this stage, we're taking information in. We're taking information in from uh um true neighborhood residents, council, administration. Um, as you suggested, um, having a conversation with the school boards to understand their perspective about. Um, uh, the number of students within a uh within a catchment area and how we can address that. So. Having these initial conversations with the stakeholders that are either purchasing land and building a neighborhood. Or the residents within that neighborhood, that's the, that will be the content that will help us understand. Um, how the bylaw is going to be created. We're at the very early stage of this project, taking information in. The land use, uh, the municipal development plan gives us a guide how to produce that land use bylaw. And it talks about place types. And there are, just as we talked about themes that came out of. Uh, our council interview sessions, there were themes or place types that came out that are very clear. In the municipal development plan that there's mature neighborhoods and there's established and then there's greenfields. So within those could be, um. So within those could be, I don't want to do a hot take or bias the rest of the project, but those could be the zones that we're looking at going forward.
Ms. Chairman, if I could add to that, and I think that's a really good overview. I think what land use bylaws, the way they're designed, and they're designed in accordance with the legislation. So we do have to work within that framework. Land use bylaws exist today, especially, you know, especially when you get outside of the metro regions of Edmonton and Calgary, but they're all pretty much the same. They follow that same, that same pattern and terminology that you described. Like you'd have your low density R1 district, you'd have a C1 district, and they're all more or less the same. They're not, you know, they're they're very, they're very plain, and they don't really speak to what's actually happening. And so, and I know I've talked about this before, I've talked about being place based and design based, because you experience a city in a place at the ground. You don't experience it from an airplane level. So we want to try to create a document that is reflective of that. And that's why we identified the place types that we that we have. That land use bylaw structure that you described, it's designed in a way that tells you what you can't do, not what you can do. And I think we want to try to work within the legislation and within the structure that we are mandated to do so, but to try to change that approach. We don't want to regulate for the sake of regulating. We want to be flexible and look at innovative and creative ways to accommodate redevelopment that aligns with the vision and the strategy that is set out within our MDP. So, you know, I know that does sound great, and that is the and it is the initial stages that we're going to have to work through, but that is the challenge that we're faced with.
No, thank you, and I appreciate that. I just, when I continue to look at this, it's completely a built out city, except for the new areas that are coming out. And we're focusing a lot of time on this. And I know when you talk about place, I understand that. But in in a built out place, you know, I I'm trying to get down to the structures. So to try and understand, I'm more in the black and the white, not the gray. Okay, thank you.
Anything further, anybody? Seeing nothing? Thank you, folks, for your time today. Appreciate the appreciate the update. Mr. Morrissey, do we have time for a five minute break or should we keep moving? It's up to you. Five, okay, five minute break, everybody. It is 3:10, reconvene at 3:15. Thank you. Counselor May, and Counselor Harris, are you with us? I'm ready to reconvene the meeting. Are we ready to go? Okay, let's start. I've just been informed that we have a bit of a mix up on dates. So the agenda item, number five, hydrogen hub update, will be deferred to a later meeting and rescheduled. So given that, we'll move on to, I guess, really the only thing left on this today's agenda, the meeting procedures by law. And call on Mr. Kaiser and Ms. Volter to present, please.
Good afternoon, members of the Committee of the Whole. I am here this afternoon to present bylaw C2922, which is an update to the current meeting procedures bylaw, C1118. The revisions included in this bylaw were drafted with a few primary goals. Firstly, to ensure the bylaw aligned with relevant legislation, namely, the Municipal Government Act and the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Second, to ensure the bylaw was consistent with widely adopted parliamentary procedure, whether that's municipalities in the region or Robert's Rules of Order. And third, to reflect our city council's meeting procedures, as this bylaw is primarily meant to serve council, taking into consideration, of course, that this bylaw is also used by municipal boards and committees. As context, the Municipal Government Act states in section 145 that a council may, by bylaw, establish the procedures to be followed by the council. The meeting procedures bylaw passed in accordance with the MGA, MGA, fits in the center of the hierarchy of the rules for a council, first being the MGA, then this procedure bylaw, and then Robert's Rules of Order. It is the city's practice to review the meeting procedures bylaw with each sitting of council being once every four years or as needed. My presentation today is intended to begin that review process and provide this committee with an opportunity to provide any feedback they may have on the proposed changes or on the overall content of the bylaw. Many of the changes contained within C2922 are for legibility and ease of reference, but there are some more noteworthy changes that were detailed in my report, and I would like to briefly review with you now. First, the definitions list was greatly reduced, as many of the terms, we didn't feel required that level of detail in the context of this bylaw. Some definitions contained more process oriented information, and that was moved to the relevance, excuse me, relevant sections of the bylaw. The content, secondly, the content and structure of the council and committee of the whole meeting agendas was added to C2922, as this further clarifies processes for members of the public, and it also is a recommendation of municipal affairs. This draft bylaw also contains the addition of what's referred to as a consent agenda. In essence, a consent agenda is a method by which council can approve several agenda items using a single motion. The intent of a consent agenda is to increase meeting efficiency by more easily approving items which do not warrant debate. Some of these items include the approval of meeting minutes, motions resulting from closed session discussions or reports, or bylaws that are scheduled for first reading. So to introduce it to council. If a member would like to debate an item included in the consent agenda, they they need only request that it be removed, and then the item becomes a separate numbered item on the agenda. An item would also be removed from consent agenda if a member declares a pecuniary interest. The addition of the consent agenda in bylaw C2922 was to give council more options when working through a meeting agenda and to find efficiencies where possible. Changes were also made to the provisions for notifying council of a meeting date or time change. The current bylaw contains separate notification requirements for each meeting type. In this draft bylaw, all of those sections have been consolidated, as the content was the same regardless of the meeting type. Another change in section 17, which is the notification section, is the added ability for the city manager, in consultation with the members of council, to change the date, time, or place of a pre-approved regular council, special, or committee of the whole meeting. This is kind of an efficiency that was identified mainly during COVID. The last changes I will detail in my presentation are the changes to section 27.16 concerning the withdrawal of a motion. In 2019, the current procedures bylaw was amended to allow the mover of a motion to withdraw their motion at any time before it is called to a vote by the chair without receiving unanimous consent or a vote being called. It was administration's recommendation at that time that motions should not be allowed to be withdrawn following acceptance by the chair. Since this acceptance means the motion is no longer the property of the mover, it then in essence belongs to council. I'll reference Robert's Rules of Order, which states in 3312, before a motion has been stated by the chair, it is the property of the mover, who can withdraw it or modify it without asking the consent of anyone. Thus, in this brief interval between making a motion and the time which the chair places it before the assembly by stating it, the maker can withdraw. The recommendations outlined in C2922 also reflect the recommendations of registered parliamentarian Eli Mina, which he made during one of his workshops that council attended. The ability to withdraw a motion at any point without unanimous consent or a vote does give council flexibility, but I'm inclined to think it's at the expense of best practices in terms of governance. So that concludes my presentation. And of course, I welcome any questions or comments on the bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions, folks? Concerns, comments? We got some. Thank you. Mayor Catcher, hang on one second till I get you a mic. Good to go.
Okay, I have a few questions, so I'll only do a couple at a time. So on the first one for the consent agenda in 14, you've got bylaw scheduled for first reading. So I guess the question that I have on that is typically, there's during first reading, there's quite a bit of discussion, debate, and questions. So why would we include this one? And I only ask that because if you say, well, if you wish to take it out and place it into the agenda, you need to ensure you have all the proper people ready to speak to it. So that's the only one that I have a real concern with on that one. So why would that one be given special attention?
Through the chair to your worship. Thank you for that question. I do, first reading of a bylaw is essentially to introduce it to council, to bring it in front of council for later amendments, discussion, debate. Of course, we've seen historically that a great deal of discussion happens early, but for some bylaws, I do believe they would be eligible for inclusion on the consent agenda. And that would be a determination during agenda review by whoever is chairing the upcoming meeting and administration, of course. So that's something that we can navigate later. Perhaps Ms. Multer can supplement.
Through you, through the chair to your worship. That was an example of what could be used on a consent agenda. It's not saying that first reading has to be. It's just saying that that is an option, along with other types of documents that are not mentioned there. It was just examples of potential items.
And maybe just to add on to that, it is something that we've seen in other municipalities, meeting procedures by law, that first readings are included in consent agendas. Again, it's situation specific, but it's there.
So the second question that I have, and then I'll let somebody go on. So in our current practices that we do, we ask questions before we go to a motion, but typically, there's a lot of almost debate that goes into that. Now, I didn't see anywhere within this. Is that an actual written written part of this? Did I miss it? Or is this just a practice that we're doing based on what council? I might have missed it. There's a lot of pages.
Through the chair to your worship. Yeah, that's under rules governing debate, I believe, or meeting etiquette. It'll take me a little bit to shuffle through here, although I added tabs. It's going to just take me a second here. Through your worship, I think it's section 21.2. So it says, "An item of business shall first be introduced to council and may be followed by clarifying questions of administration, an external presenter, or other members." So our practice is always to have a motion introduced and then to take a question period. But it is a "may," so it's not, it's not a requirement. I would say it's, it's at the, it's at the judgment of the chair, would be my interpretation of that.
Okay, I just want clarity on that, because we seem to be doing it hard and fast. So, so it's just a "may." I'll let somebody else go on, and I'll come back into the order.
Thank you. Counselor Blizzard, and I'll insert myself after Counselor Macon, thank you.
Thanks, I see a lot of work went into this. The first document has tons of red, which a lot of them I like, you know, for clarity, it's a good thing. One I was looking at was on 4.1. "A quorum of council is a majority of all members added in now who are in attendance for the meeting." So, just to clarify for myself, so if there's only five of us here, a quorum is three?
I'm sorry, maybe I don't quite understand the question.
Well, it says in here, "A quorum of council is a majority of all members who are in attendance for the meeting." So if that's the case, if five of us are in attendance, three is a quorum?
Sure, I think I'm understanding, so it would be people who are actually... Yeah, apologies. Yeah, I do think maybe the phrasing is a bit confusing.
So it should still be four?
Yeah.
Because it kinda makes it sound like it's a majority of the members who are in attendance. So if three are in attendance, two is a quorum.
Yeah.
Five in attendance, three, but that's not the case.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Blizzard, yeah, it would be quorum is those that are in attendance.
Because I'm just, if you read it as a sentence, does it not sound like that, or is that just me?
No, I would agree, I would agree.
Okay, okay, okay. Then I'll leave the next one, because I had one, well, if that's the case, we don't need number three, 4.3. But, so we should have four minimum, okay. And then, I'll go to the second question then. 22.4 mentions about if somebody leaves a meeting, whether it's a short, you know, they have to use the facilities, or they're leaving because they're not feeling well. It's written down, is the same true in camera? So should, if somebody leaves an in-camera meeting, what if it's only council?
Through the chair to Counselor Blizzard.
It should be recorded by the chair, then, that somebody left at X time?
Yes, that's right. So our standard practice now is events that happen while administration is outside the space, while council's meeting in closed session. Those details are, relevant details are given to administration. So what time it's closed, and who would be in attendance, who left.
Okay, and I have another one, but I'll, come back to me after.
Thank you. Counselor Macon?
Thank you. So on the consent agenda, once we pass this update to the procedures by law, are we able to just automatically start using a consent agenda? Or do we have to agree to that further through another motion?
So through the chair to Counselor Macon, it could be implemented once the bylaw is approved. So it would be at the direction of the mayor or the chair of the upcoming meeting, what is included on the consent agenda, of course, with input from administration. But yeah, it could be implemented right away without a motion to approve the contents of the consent agenda, if I'm understanding your question.
Okay, thank you. And then I'll just make a comment on that, because I had a lot of conversations with other municipalities about consent agendas, and I'm really excited about the efficiency that a consent agenda can provide us. And so, and the first reading got brought up with those municipalities as well, and they said, yeah, they have first reading on their consent agendas as well, and it really does add to the efficiency. And there are, I can see that there might be some first readings that we might want to discuss. I think quite a few of them can just go on the consent agenda. We might see the odd one that we want to pull off. But I think for the most part, first readings happen so that we can get to the public hearing. So I certainly wouldn't want to see that removed as an option for the consent agenda. So look forward to the opportunity to have that efficiency in our meetings. Thanks.
Finished? I was scrolling through, and I lost the sections. I wanted to refer to the two sections, on Mr. Fleming, the one on the withdrawal of a motion once made. And Mayor Catcher also brought it up, the process governing question period versus debate without a motion. It's my belief that many members of council struggle with the concept of questions only before a motion. And sometimes that leads to motions so that we can have debate. When it says "may," is it the interpretation, then, that it's not mandatory that there be that question period? Or that it be limited to just questions only?
Through, or to you, Mr. Chair. "May," whenever it's in legislation or bylaws, means that it's a choice, so you're not prescribed to do it. So perhaps it's just my interpretation, but for example, in some meetings, in whatever context the chair deems appropriate, there's an order of speaking and questions. You wouldn't necessarily be compelled to go through that order and ask each member individually if they have any questions. You can just say, "Are there any questions?" Well, then, we're not going to go through a structured question period. We're just going to move on to discussion and debate. It's to give council a little bit of flexibility, given the context of the item.
If you can, if you have an opinion, what are the merits of not allowing, I hesitate to use the word "debate," because you can't debate something until you have it in front of you, but you could certainly discuss. So what is the merit of limiting discussion before there's a motion? From Robert's Rules of Order perspective, or just common sense procedures when it comes to running a meeting? And if you, and if you don't have comments, that's fine. I just wonder if we really need to have a question period, because we can ask questions at any particular point in time. But I fail to see why we need to have a motion to have discussion.
To you, to the chair, just when we introduced this, which I think it was exactly four years ago, we, we put that in there. The idea at the time was that, you know, you get a, a presentation is made to council, perhaps the item is fairly complex, maybe not all members understand it completely. So the question period is meant to just allow everyone to completely understand the issue. So the idea is get your questions out, so there's clarity, and then debate can start. Because it's hard to debate a matter if different members of council have a different level of understanding of the item. I mean, the downside of it is, it, you know, one, you need to wait to hold back your, your, your opinion or your debates. And two, I've been impressed with the ability of how we've, questions get asked that are essentially rhetorical in nature, right? Which is also not the intent of the question period, but a really good way to get a head start on the debate. So those, those are the downsides of having it. The upside was supposed to be full understanding and clarity, so everyone's on a level playing field. Because again, the most important principle is procedural fairness, right? And so it was meant to try to address that.
And, and, thank you, Troy. In 2017, the council, of the newly-elected council, those that wished, went to Sherwood Park, and we sat with other councillors. And one of the presentations that day was a fellow out of the States, Nell Bandian, I think I've said it correctly. And when he was mayor of his city in the States, and he asked the question, "Do you run a structured meeting, or do you, do you allow discussion without a motion?" And his comment was that when he ran the meetings, he ran it unstructured, and discussion was allowed to happen. And sometimes a motion would flow, and sometimes it wouldn't. But that's the point, I guess I'm trying to drive home here, is if you can't withdraw a motion, you also stifle the discussion, in my opinion. And somewhere, there's got to be, in my opinion, again, a little better balance. I don't know where it is, but there's not one member of council that doesn't struggle with that discussion period only in advance. Not one. So, so I welcome any suggestions or observations you folks might have on that particular issue. I know personally, I'm not asking any more questions. It's a waste of time. I can ask the questions if a motion gets made, and if no motion gets made, I'm good with that, too. So, but it stifles. That's, that, that approach also stifles the conversation that I think has to happen before we decide whether or not you even want to have a motion on the table. So, so I'm, I'm looking for answers. Anything you might add, and then I'm done, done for this question period, thank you.
You want to go?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
To the chair, would it be helpful to include wording that is specific to those questions that may be asked for clarifying purposes? So that it's not an opportunity to just have everybody speak, but for those members who truly need more clarification in order to make an educated decision? Would that be helpful?
You're referencing the questions, though, again. And, and my point is that there's not one member that sits up here on a regular basis that doesn't struggle with the concept of the difference between a question and an opinion. Not one, including every, well, everybody, and I'm dead serious. Some might offend more than others. The point is that allowing other councillors to resp... I can't express the way I think unless I voice it. And unless I voice it, other councillors can't comment on the way I think. And I'm also, part of the reason for voicing a comment is, is, is looking for feedback. And, and I don't know why we have to have a motion on the floor before that feedback process can happen.
I think the option, so we will take that back, and we can discuss if there are any options within that. But generally speaking, one option is just get rid of that altogether. And just say, once an item is put on, that, once, after an item is presented, that we go straight to a motion, and then that just opens everything up, so.
And that's one option. The other option would be to allow some conversation before we go to a motion. I, and I don't know why we couldn't. So any, any comments you have? I'm not trying to imply that our system doesn't work either, but I do think that everybody here finds it frustrating on occasion. And I think it could be better as a result. And that's the gist of my point, and, and any comments you might have, I'd appreciate. Thank you. Counselor Harris, I believe you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So getting back to the consent agenda, and I've had occasion to be involved in consent agendas in some of the external boards and committees that I've become involved in. And I like the way they work, so, but I just want to touch base with it. So as it stands right now, if we have all four sets of minutes on the consent agenda, and we've got two bylaws for first reading, if nobody says anything to take them off the consent agenda, then when we approve the agenda with the consent agenda items, then they are automatically passed by virtue of state on the consent agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Kaiser?
Through the chair to Counselor Harris, yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so then if Counselor Kelly, or I, or Counselor Macon, or anybody had a question about bylaw 63-99, whatever the case may be, then ultimately, we remove it, we just say, "I'd like to remove this item from the consent agenda," and then it ultimately reverts into the discussion queue in accordance with wherever it would be on the agenda. Or would administration have to then say, "Okay, that one's going to be inserted as 6.3"? Is that kind of how we would deal with it?
Through the chair to Counselor Harris, yes. Once a member requests that it's removed from the consent agenda or wants to see some discussion around that item, it is automatically removed. Once there's a request, you don't have to take it to a vote or anything like that. And then it would become part of the agenda as a separate item. I think I addressed all your points there.
Yeah, yeah, more or less. But if it's on the consent agenda, then it's not been given a unique agenda item, correct? Or it, will it have an agenda item by virtue of the fact that if it gets pulled off the consent, then it needs to have some level of discussion at subsequent time on the agenda?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Harris, it would, of course, be numerically valued in the consent agenda. But once it's removed from the consent agenda, it would have to become a separately numbered item on the meeting agenda for discussion.
Okay.
As a separate item.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a big improvement. And I tend to agree with what Counselor Kelly's talking about. There are times where I, I think that we just spend way too much time in meetings dreaming up questions for the sake of asking questions, as opposed to getting on with the, the meat and potatoes discussion on the validity, or where thereof, of any particular item that's on the agenda. So I would support administration taking that back and looking at a process by which we can, you know, we can kind of move forward in a more expeditious manner to get to the meat of what ultimately we're here for. And that's to debate and discuss and make fundamental decisions about items that are important to the, to the board, or to the, to the council. So I would support administration looking at that. So thank you very much, those are my questions.
Thank you. Has everybody had one go here? Counselor Neuen, have you had? Okay, you're up, go ahead.
Yeah, and then just, just dovetailing on, on that, I would support taking this back to administration as well. Just a question, then, does, does council have to agree on, if, if we're going in a new direction for a procedure of question and, and comment debate? Is that something that is solely at the discretion of the chair? Or is that something that, you know, that would maybe evoke a discussion from, from all members of council?
Through the chair to Counselor Neuen, as the bylaw is written right now, there is that, there may be a question period. So it is pretty much at the direction of the chair. If it's the will of council, there could be more prescriptive language about the process surrounding questions, discussion, and debate, and where the making of the motion lies within that. But that is up to you. This is your meeting bylaw, and you can decide how prescriptive or how lenient you want to be in terms of procedure.
Okay, thank you, that, that clears that up. And then another, just small question, is just what the, what a consent agenda would look like. So it, it's basically a subset agenda of a regular agenda, then, and probably at the beginning? Like, that's the appearance of it?
Through the chair to Counselor Neuen, yes, it would be a separate itemized list within the agenda, and those items would be contained in your agenda package for your reference, obviously, so you can look them over before approving them through consent agenda. But it would form part of your agenda package, similar to how it would now, except now, through a single motion, it can be approved.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Mayor Catcher?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to section 18, electronic voting. In your section 18.2.1, you've got "All members shall vote using electronic voting system unless excused from voting or due to technical error." So I guess my question on that is, does that have to be further defined excuse from voting? Because there is only really one excuse not to vote. And the second one is due to technical error. I mean, you can still vote by raising a hand or something else, because the MGA says you must vote. So does that area need some clarity, cleaning up?
Through the chair to Mayor Catcher. In 18.3, it does account for the use of those cards that we're so familiar with. So I, I hope that addresses that portion of your comment. And then when it comes to the excused from voting, that would be something that we reference the MGA, because as you said, there's only specific circumstances in which you can excuse yourself from voting or are obligated to. If you would like further clarity on that, perhaps we can add that content. But it would just be a reference to the Municipal Government Act exclusions.
Yeah, okay, and I probably missed that in the line saw in 18.3, sorry. And then, so then, in your section 29, you've got the full definition of pecuniary interest. Because that's already in the MGA, is that something that's absolutely necessary? You said you're trying to clean this up. So if it's already in there, is, do we feel it's needed?
Through the chair to Mayor Catcher. It's a fine balance between stripping all content away that other legislation covers, and also ease of reference. Because it is a portion of the bylaw that we do speak to, and pecuniary interest is referenced throughout, we thought that maybe it would... We thought that maybe it would, it would make sense in this document and in the context of this bylaw to leave it in, even though you're correct in saying it does mirror the MGA provisions.
And for me, I don't care either way. It's just, on one hand, you see you're cleaning it up, and the next hand, it's completely taken out and stuck in there. So I'm fine with it either way. Thank you, I'm good, and I think you've done a really good job on tweak, doing the tweaks on this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Blizzard, please.
Yeah, just one more. Maybe it's just not clear to me, maybe it's clear to everyone else, but twenty-seven point six point five, it talks about the chair shall only allow one amendment to the main motion. So you can't have more than one, or is that one and two go together? One amendment to the amendment to be considered at a time? Because to me, it kind of sounds like you can only do one amendment to the main motion.
Through the chair to Counselor Blizzard, that is correct, that only one amendment to the main motion can be on the floor at a time, and then you can amend the amendment, so.
Then you can make another amendment separately later? Okay.
That's right.
Because it kind of sounds to me like you're only allowed one amendment, but maybe that's just the way I'm reading it.
We can look at that phrasing, if that helps with clarity.
I don't see anything else. Thank you, folks, for your time and your patience today. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we're through the bulk of the agenda. We're at council inquiries. Any, any questions of administration, folks? Counselor Harris, Counselor Macon? No? Okay. I'm sorry, I missed that. Please go ahead.
So this question is to Mr. Fleming. A few meetings ago, Counselor Harris had brought up the bus stop on ninety-five A, and the vandalism and, and the unsightliness of it, and there was a little bit of work done to it, but since then, it has been vandalized again. Some more work has been done on it. The, the bus shelter looks horrific. Like, is there something more that we can do to that bus shelter? It's already been vandalized a third time since we've had this conversation.
Through your worship, I can, I can jump in here. I think the vandalism you're referring to kind of looks like paint's been thrown on it. That is actually a result of trying to clean off the graffiti that was in place. What we're finding is their cleaning efforts aren't working, so the panes of glass have to be replaced. We have reached out to crystal glass to get some quotes. We're also looking at putting a vinyl wrap around the glass, so that when it's graffitied, we can peel off the wrap and replace it in the future. So work is ongoing, but we're looking to secure quotes right now.
Okay, and I understand, you know, that is a result of that. It has got more graffiti on the other side of it again. I haven't done a third fort report on, but since they cleaned the last time, it's been done again. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harris?
I guess picking up on that, that particular bus shelter that I raised and that council, or that the mayor has brought back to light, is a non-standard bus stop that the Lions Club donated to us back before we actually even had a transit service, that I recall. The question is, are we going to stay with these non-standard bus shelters? Because the other ones, like on Ninety-Ninth Avenue or elsewhere, South Ford Drive, are all the new version. Are, are we not in a better position to start changing those ones out? And I mean no disrespect to the Lions for the work that they did when they initially donated that particular structure. But is the time arrived? So it's a rhetorical question. Has the time arrived to replace that and just move with our, with our new standard bus stops? So I'll leave that with administration. Thank you.
I assume administration will comment at a later date.
Yeah, through your worship, and we'll take that away and discuss it. We hadn't discussed replacing it to this point, but it's something we could look at.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else, folks? Not seeing anything. I need a motion, please, to go in camera. Counselor Noyan, do you have a mic?
I moved that camera, sorry, I moved that council enter, closed session, I guess. We haven't approved the bylaw yet, for matters underfoot.
Thank you. All right, we actually have to vote on it. You're correct. I'll call the vote, call the question.
We need you to use your cards, please, or verbally.
Counselor Harris votes affirmative. Perfect, it's carried. We're in camera. Thank you.